This meeting will continue in a moment. You're watching SNCAT Government Access.
I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of January 25, 2010. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Councilmembers Ratty.
Here.
Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, next is invocation speaker Pastor Peter Bosler. If you'd all stand, please. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. He must not have any problems at all he's here. That's great. Heavenly Father, without a doubt, the men and women up on this board need wisdom beyond what they have needed since I've been in this city for almost 20 years. I pray that you would give them favor. Favor with the police department, favor with the fire department, favor with the community. They can see what they need to see and hear what they need to hear. God bless our city. Rain down abundance. Rain down the anointing of how to create business and finance. And God, we look forward to good things. And we thank you for your presence and your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the Pudge Allegiance, please. Mr. Adams, would you lead us?
Please join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we have comments from the public. I have no speaker cards. Anyone in the public like to speak under comments from the public? Okay, let's move on to the next item as a request from... Whoops. Come on up, sir. Just give us your name for the record and then fill out one of those cards.
My name is Bob Raffey, R-A-Y-P-P-Y. I live in Winfield Springs, 6954 Polkville, Wayne and Circle. I got an unpleasant surprise last June when my lender gave, sent me a letter and said, "You need to get flood insurance." I was shocked at that time. I found out that the flood insurance was going to cost me $1,987 for one year. And that's second shock that summer. And I also found out that this fee, premium fee, was set by FEMA. My insurance agent said, "You can check around for lower rates, but you won't find any." He was right. Now, I moved, I've been in that house since April of 1999. Bought it new. I was in there one year and I got another, another letter from, a letter, early letter, from my lender saying, "You're in a flood zone. Get insurance." I paid $250 a year for one year. I was sent another letter that said, "You no longer need it because some changes has been made, have been made to the flood control system and you can drop the flood insurance." Now, my question is, I'd been out of flood, a flood zone theoretically, for nine years. And then all of a sudden, not only do I have to take out flood insurance again, but the premium is absurd. And I'm wondering, Spark City Council, if you have any plans to improve the flood control system in Sparks and particularly in and around Winfield Springs? Because I have some neighbors that have the same problem. And I'm speaking for them.
Okay. And I think I, I got your email, Mr. Raffey, and I passed it on to our Public Works Director.
Sent it on to John Martini, yes. I got a call from John.
And you have been talking with him?
I sent him, I have been talking to him, and I sent him a copy of my elevation certificate, which he wanted.
Okay.
About a week ago.
Okay. And I see John's here, so, and I have a question for you first. Mr. Schmidt.
Are we, do we, are we aware that in Winfield Springs, do we agree with that? I mean, maybe that's a question for John to tell us what's going on, because I've never been aware we were in a flood zone up there.
For the record, Neil Krutz, Director of Community Development. The, prior to development out there, the area wasn't a flood zone. And, you know, we worked through, you know, the process of construction and were able to remove that area from the flood zone. FEMA came through our area and remapped it in the last couple of years. And in remapping it, they inadvertently put some properties such as his back in the flood zone. Therefore, that's why he's getting the requirements for insurance. So, we're working with FEMA to try and get those things fixed.
Okay. Thanks. Excuse me, is it the same time they came through and redid the marina, too? Same time?
Yes, sir.
It's strange, because two of my neighbors who have since then asked for a change, I guess they called a letter of map amendment, got response and back, and they were shown on the map as part of their dwelling, part of their house in the flood zone. And they got the elevation, they said, "You don't, you're no longer in the flood zone." But yet, my property is not in the gray area, which is the flood zone A. It is in flood zone X, and I have the requirement for flood insurance.
Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, thank you, sir, for bringing that. I think you're probably the third one I've heard from on that same street, so...
Probably more.
Yeah, and there probably is. So, if you know some of your neighbors that are in the same boat, would, you know, would you have them give a call to our city work so we can get all this done at once?
You might have heard from Rich Lyle?
Yeah, that's who I heard from.
I've been talking to him. I'm representing him.
So, what I hear then is we're working on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we don't have control over FEMA, do we, as far as what?
Some days we wish we did, but unfortunately...
It's kind of like the Army Corps of Engineers, probably. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Raffey. We are working on it and we'll get resolution. No, he's, this is John Martini, right there. Okay. Anyone else under public comment?
Can I get your address?
Okay, next we have requests from council members Julia Ratty and Phil Salerno to reconsider action taken on a regular meeting of January 11, 2010. So, we need a motion to reconsider, Sean?
Yes, sir. This would be a vote first by the city council to reconsider it. And I have included the items on your agenda today. If your vote was a firm vote to reconsider, you could proceed with those today. If it was to deny reconsideration today, I would simply ask, as you approved the agenda, that you allow me to withdraw those items, as you would have your prior actions stand.
So, do we have a motion, Julia?
Do they need to reconsider? Does the motion need to include both actions? I mean, is there a specific way that I need to say that, Sean?
I think you're asking for the reconsideration. You know, as stated in the agenda item, I'll just state it here, that Councilmen Ratty and Salerno request the city council to undertake a motion in action to reconsider actions taken on January 11, 2010 regarding a public hearing, consideration of possible city council consent for the redevelopment agency to render to the Victorian Square Purchase and Sales Agreement for public rights away in the amount of $241,000 inclusive of closing costs. And this would pertain to actions which were undertaken by the council. And specifically for the city council today, it would be heard subsequently in item 7.1 if approved. At this time, Mr. Mayor, you could request a motion.
Okay.
I would go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, you have a second? Mr. Schmidt, whoops.
I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion by Julia Ratty, second by Councilman Smith. Questions, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Mr., if we're going to do Mr. Carey's motion, I believe you said that the, it was $241,559.81 inclusive of closing costs? My agenda item says it's plus closing cost.
You're correct, Mr. Schmidt. It is correct that the amount of your motion should say $241,559.81 plus closing cost. You are correct.
Thank you.
Is that your motion, Julia?
Yes.
Second, I'll agree with that. Mr. Schmidt, okay. Mr. Carrigan.
Yeah, for the record, why are we reconsidering this?
I don't think you need a particular reason to reconsider it. It's certainly up to the city council and the mayor to take the motion and then bring that out during the agenda item itself. I, in other words, I don't think you need to state a reason as part of the motion.
Okay. All right. Everyone understand? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye or vote.
Aye.
All right. I forgot to put, everybody's aye, is that what I got? Okay. So, it passes unanimously. Thanks, Julia. Okay, so, we're, we're good to go on that one, particular one. Then the next one is on the redevelopment agency when that comes up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, let's go to approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next we have presentation. I don't have, or, I'm sorry, recommendation to approve meeting minutes of December 14. Any additions or corrections or deletions? Mr. Schmidt.
A motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 14, 2009. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is presentations and announcements. I don't have anything on the agenda, but we do have a special occasion here. And I would like Mr. Tony Fianaca to come down, please. And if the family wants to join him, please come down and stand around. So, as most of you know, Mr. Fianaca owns Sparks Florists. Been the owner for a long, long time. In fact, that's what we're here to celebrate today. 50 years in business in the city of Sparks, and congratulations, Tony. We really appreciate your longstanding efforts to be in the city of Sparks. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas Sparks Florist was established on February 1, 1960 on B Street in Sparks, and whereas for the past 50 years Sparks Florist has been a good steward of city, of the city of Sparks. And whereas Tony Fianaca, owner and president of Sparks Florist, Inc., has worked the past 50 years to serve the community and bring joy and happiness with flowers. And whereas Sparks Florist will continue its work to help numerous charities with their causes. And whereas Sparks Florist will continue to serve the community in the next 50 years by continuing to provide superior quality floral products and a great work environment. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim February 1, 2010 Sparks Florist Day. Congratulations. Tony, and you look, you look so young. You must have started work when you were, what, five years old there?
Yeah, I was about that. You're really close. But I want you to know...
Please introduce the rest of your family.
I'd like to. My daughter Lori. Grandson Tony, little Tony.
Little Tony.
My grandson Andy. And my son Mike, who could not make it here because he had a prior engagement.
He's working.
This is a group that's taking over. So, I did the, I did the first 50 years.
Up to now, baby.
They get the next 50. Anyway, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Yeah, I just want to apply a question to the mayor and the captain, but I can make
Okay, next is consent items, 5.1 through 5.5. Anybody want to pull a consent item? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.5.
Do we have a second? Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.5. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, moving on to general business. Consideration and approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointments to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee includes representation from various other committees. The mayor has placed before you today a recommendation that the council confirm the appointments of Jeanette Ramirez, representing the Sparks Advisory Committee for the disabled, Mr. Jack Byron, representing the Parks and Recreation Commission, and finally, Mr. Doug Vols from the Planning Commission. At this time, you could entertain a motion for your consideration.
And just one, one comment that I'd like to make here is that these people all volunteered to do this. They wanted to be on the advisory committee, so I was concerned maybe nobody would step up, but these people readily stepped right up to the plate to do this. So, having said that, we're looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Mr. Carrigan.
Second.
Move by Councilman Salerno, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve the appointments to the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.2, consideration and approval of the mayor's recommendation of appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As of January 1, the city of Sparks Planning Commission had one vacancy. The mayor undertook review of applications on file and has placed before you today a recommendation that that appointment be filled by Barbara Wright Sanders to the Sparks Planning Commission.
And on this one, as I looked through the applications, she seemed like the most qualified to me and was very excited about being appointed to planning commission. Having said that, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to approve the mayor's recommendation.
Mr. Carrigan. Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve the appointment to the Sparks Planning Commission, Barbara Wright Sanders. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Julia?
Aye.
Thank you. Passed unanimously. Next, 6.3, consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 3172 directing the county treasurer to give notice of the sale of property subject to the lien of a delinquent assessment.
Hi, Debbie Hunt. I'm in this apartment, for the record. This is the agenda item that came last time, and you wanted to do some research on what the consequences were of not directing the county to put, give notice of the sale of these properties. So, after a bit of research, it looks like if you don't do it, any of the bondholders can proceed with the foreclosures in their na, I mean, in the name of the city. They can make the city foreclose on it. Those bondholders can also take action against the city for not protecting their bond rights. And the cursory who's in them, there's two of them that are currently unpaid, and that was still the status this morning. One of them is occupied. The other one looks like it's a rental, and there's some, some items stored in there, but nobody's actually living in it. And then some research on the three types of foreclosures that could occur, a bank foreclosure, a tax lien, or a, sorry, a tax sale or a lien sale. This would fall under the category of a lien sale, and that would, the, on the date of the sale, whomever paid the liens and any penalties would become potentially a new owner, but the old owners have, I want to say, two years. I can't remember now. Yes, two years to redeem the lien, and they can pay up to 1% interest. If the lien is redeemed, then ownership never transfers. So, they have those two years. And they, they, they said, for the most part, tax liens and, tax sales and lien sales are usually paid by the bank because there's usually a mortgage, and they don't want to lose the house for the price of the tax or the lien.
Okay, questions for Debbie? Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 3172 directing the county treasurer to give notice of the sale of property subject to lien of a delinquent assessment.
Mr. Salerno.
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Resolution Number 3172. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Debbie. Appreciate it. Okay, item 6.4, presentation, discussion, and possible direction on Chapter 6, A Sustainable City of Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Krutz and Ms. Melby.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini, members of the city council. For the record, Neil Krutz, Community Development Director. Here today with Karen Melby to do a short presentation slash workshop, if you would like, on what's going to be Chapter 6 of our master plan update or our comprehensive plan update. You'll recall that we, we took the workload from that internally with last January's budget cuts. I wanted to, to point out that we are on a schedule to have the document done and through the adoption process by the end of this calendar year. So, we're excited to be here today. Karen's going to talk to you about our chapter on sustainability. And with that, I'll turn over to Karen.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. And I wanted to give you an update on, a workshop on Chapter 6. And then at the end, I was going to give you a little update on where we're at in the process right now. Oh, it's not going to switch on. So, what I want to talk to you today about is Chapter 6, which is a sustainable city. This is our next draft chapter that we prepared. We're at, and, um, ready for going out for public, for comment. I had some workshops with the planning commission and also a community workshop both in November. And the reason I've skipped to Chapter 6 is that some of the other chapters are requiring other additional input. So, I thought, I've got this chapter written, we'd start, we'd bring it before you today. It's not just flipping. Um, a sustainable chap, this chapter called A Sustainable City promotes the importance of making Sparks a sustainable community. It recognizes the importance of leaving a healthy legacy for our future generations. The topic was a, a much discussed topic or an important topic at the community workshops that we had, had. A draft sustainability action plan was prepared in the fall of 2008, and also a sustainable action committee was established. The action plan provides an outline for increasing sustainability practices within the city. Action plan is more than protecting the environment. It also provides methods to work with limited resources and budgets. It helps citizens save money and increase the quality of life. The key initiatives in this chapter, I've taken some, a bunch of the points from the action plan, but the key initiatives are to promote the city's sustainable practices, sorry, by example. Continue maintenance and participation in the city's and regional sustainable committees and establishing educational opportunities for the employees and citizens. A sustainable city is one that practices sustainable methods and works with the citizens and neighboring communities to integrate its sustainable practices into daily life. One of the premises of this chapter is that we have to work as a region. Doing sustainable stuff just in Sparks will not help the whole Truckee Meadows. We need to work as a region. So, that's one of the important things. This chapter has five proposed, five proposed goals. One goal from the housing element and one from the conservation element. The first goal is to strive to reduce the carbon emissions in the city of Sparks. This goal reinforces one of the principles of the Sustainable Action Plan, which is to reduce the carbon emissions. The policy strives to establish the baseline greenhouse gas emissions or carbon footprint for the city and developing a plan to reduce the city's carbon footprint. Third policy addresses land development practices. What I thought I'd do is if anybody has any comments or discussion, I thought we'd do that after each goal or policy, have our discussion as we go through them. Does anybody have any comments or questions? If not, I'll go forward. Goal two, or CS2, promotes a sustainable city by setting an example with the city policies and programs. If the city of Sparks is committed to being a sustainable city, the initial steps need to be taken by the city. This will set the example for the community. Goal CS2 states that in order for Sparks to be a sustainable city, the city needs to set the example. The policies emphasize the practices of the city that are sustainable. We are already working on numerous of these projects and methods to reduce our power consumption, providing cost savings to the city. We also have recycling programs. Again, any comments or questions on this goal?
Mr. Smith.
Is Larry D. Johnson the only facility with the solar panels in the city, or do we have more?
My understanding is we're working on, we have a grant, we're going to be putting solar panels at the police department.
Okay, and then the other green part of this is the signals. We're replacing all the lights and, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or... Goal SC3 utilizes, utilize the sustainability committee as a resource for environmental stewardship while promoting regional collaboration. Sustainability means to be a regional goal, and by maintaining the sustainability committee and working with the other agencies within the Truckee Meadows, Sparks can advance its own sustainability while promoting regional sustainability. Goal C3, I mean, I'm sorry, SC3, I don't know why that's so hard for me to say, makes the sustainable committee an environmental resource and promotes working regionally for a sustainable area. The policies continue to work with the region to address the green issues regionally. Any comments or questions on this goal?
Karen?
Yes.
What's the status of the sustainability committee now?
Um, they are still a committee. They are, don't have, they've been meeting, tried to meet. Here comes Pete. He can answer that better.
Pete Echartman, city engineer and chairman of the Sustainability Committee. Over the last couple of years, our Sustainability Committee has taken a major hit through the voluntary separations and as employees have retired, we actually have probably lost, I'd say well over half our members. So, we're going to kind of refocus that right now. And most of our focus the last especially year has been towards the grants that we are receiving through the Ora and the stimulus funds. So, that's probably going to be our focus here for a while. As you know, the Sustainability Action Plan was written about a little over a year ago. And whether we're going to be able to update that and keep it updated, it just depends on our staffing levels and the time that we have. We're going to do our best to continue the committee. I think it's important. We're definitely going to continue to work regionally with Reno and Washto County. And actually, we're going to expand that regional committee to include such groups as the airport authority, the regional planning, and so forth. And we're going to have our first meeting this month to try to expand that. So, I think at a regional level, we're going to do our best and continue. On a local level, again, I guess we'll just do our best, but it is in a state of transition right now.
Thank you.
Goal SC4, strengthen the regional economy by supporting the retention, expansion of emergency, emerging green research, development, production, and industry. The city of Sparks is currently participating with the other local governments in northern, northwest Nevada together to the creation of the Northern Nevada Energy Plan. The intent of the Northern Nevada Energy Plan is to establish principles for encouraging and attracting green energy industries. This goal supports the local initiative to strengthen the local economy with a commitment to promoting green research, development, production, and industry. The policies work towards regionally supporting green industry and participating with the Northern Nevada Green Regional Partnership. The policies reinforce the importance of attracting and retaining green industries and working with the region as a whole. Any comments or questions? The last goal, which is goal SC5, encourage citizens and citizen employees to, I mean, city employees to make sustainable practices a daily routine. This last goal and policies focus on creating a community where sustainable activities become daily practices, require educational programs which emphasize the importance of sustainability. sustainable practices. This goal recognizes the importance of education. It'll play for the, for Sparks to become a sustainable community. The policies encourage both the employees and the citizens to make sustainable practices a daily routine by establishing training and educational opportunities. But also, one of the goals or policies is also to establish a reward to recognize people that are practicing sustainable practices. Any comments or questions on this one?
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has the committee brought up the subject at all in this category of single stream recycling and what they're going to position the city's going to take on that?
On what? I'm sorry. I don't know.
Single stream recycling.
Dirty, dirty warp to clean warp and all that other stuff?
I'm sorry.
Clean morph, dirty morph.
It's probably the hottest topic we have right now in the city with.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record, with as much voice as I could muster. We've had numerous conversations and we're working with Washoe County, Washoe County Health District, City of Reno and ourselves on single stream recycling. We've had presentations from Waste Management who, under the franchise agreements with the three main entities in the valley, have the ownership of the garbage stream, which is all the wet product that goes into the process that you're talking about. There's also conversations regarding dry product, which is not necessarily under the franchise. We had a presentation in mid-December that gave us kind of an overview from Waste Management's perspective, the different type of facilities that could be brought into this marketplace for doing various types of recycling, some being single stream, where you store everything in one container, and others where it was still separated at the source. The Health Department, since that point in time, has circulated a draft proposal on some diversion regulations that they would like to see, trying to get at least 10% of the total waste stream, all sources, being devoted and recycled. We're working with those folks right now. I do have a couple of particular issues that I'm working with the city attorney's office on some of the language that's in that particular one. In all instances, it's recognized that we need to be, you know, working forward and trying to develop the sustainability that's necessary for active recycling. The School District has just entered into an RFP that was accepted and was won by Waste Management that'll start doing sorting at the source in the classroom, K through 12. That should be in place sometime later this year. Part of that will be an education program that will start educating in the classroom that will hopefully then educate in the home so that we can have more recycling at the source, separation at the source that we already have as part of our franchise now with the curbside pickup every other week. So, with Peter's help, who's done a lot of the heavy work and along with the folks in Washoe County and the City of Reno, we are actively pushing this. It has been on the backboard for a couple of years. It is now actively being worked on and your members of the, of the folks being led by myself and Peter are pushing the issues and trying to bring things to the table for future discussion.
Thank you for the, for the answer on that. I guess my question is, we're here to listen to a proposed outline of policies and directions and everything else like that, but it appears that the two are not being married to one another, that Sustainable Committee is not overseeing what single stream could possibly be the single best thing that came around here to handle recycling, you know, that, I understand all this other stuff we're doing, but, you know, this, this council's going to have to make a direction on that issue pretty soon, you know. Where is our policies reflecting that issue of what this committee is thinking and doing in that direction? I don't see it anywhere. Now, you don't have to answer that question because it's obvious that it is, it's not being married here. But, you know, somewhere there should be a policy that this is the direction that the city's going to go or go ahead and leave it up to the council to make that direction of that policy.
From my observation, Mr. Smith, having been kind of dropped back into this process, having been gone for about a year from it, one of the dilemmas that we have currently, in my personal opinion, in the most recent set of discussions that we have, is that we don't have a policy regionally as to what we want a provider to provide. So, therefore, Waste Management at this point with the rear presentation was, here are options. What do you want to pay for as a community and how would it get paid for from that standpoint? Because it's tremendously an expensive investment from anyone's part, whether it would be any one company or another, or whether it would be done from a governmental standpoint as it's being done in a couple of jurisdictions in California. So, the question becomes at this point, is a policy decision, as you suggest, that at some point, some type of policy would be made for the good of, the good of the whole, that most likely it would come through your process or the process of the regional governing bodies. At that point, when a policy was decided as to what we're going to do for recycling, then the systems could be put in place, the fee structures could be developed in order to do the capital investment necessary, to do the operational investment necessary to do that. And then the question becomes, once you do the recycling that is there by whatever method, who do you sell it to in order to develop the backend? Now, power production is probably the number one thing that we would all be interested in as a community. That's the one right now that's probably the weakest of the options because of the amount of investment that goes from there. Because of that, the recyclables that we've done, and as you know, and we've had presentations on this, things that were dollars a pound a couple of years ago are fractions of pennies a pound now, if you can find a market. So, that becomes the political dilemma that we have. And I think you hit the nail right on the head about policy as to developing what we want from a sustainable community that matches into this wonderful plan. And then by doing that, by setting that policy, that will then dictate fees, investment structure and capital investment by whomever, whether it's being done by the local governments or being done by private enterprise and being forced upon the citizens at that point.
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I know that Waste Management has the wet garbage franchise for the city of Sparks and the other, and Reno and probably the county also. But these merfs, these recycling centers don't only recycle wet garbage, they recycle everything.
They can do whatever it is you design them to do. They can either do, they can actually start where it's been recycled, where it's been separated at the source, or you can put all dry and separate what's in the dry, or you can put all sources together and separate dry, wet, and whatever the case may be.
And that's the one in Sacramento, that's the way that works. They just dump it and separate it right there in the dump.
From a power production on the backside of it, having the wet product with the dry product makes for better power production on the backside, whether you're creating synthetic gases or whether you're using that as part of the mix to create a sludge that then would be incinerated to do hydropowers and those kinds of things. So, clearly, a one single source, everything just drop into a single container is easier for the people that are throwing it away. And it produces the best possible output on the backside if energy is the ultimate goal of the sustainability. The investment in that product is obviously more expensive than the other options, but it's certainly in the realm. There are multiple vendors out there today that would be more than happy to do it if you can provide them a funding stream.
Well, and that was my point. It's, I think you may, we may be getting more bids than from one company on this. There's quite a few companies interested in this.
In today's world with, based on the franchises, you can have other entities involved with the dry. Clearly, dry, if that's an option, you have many more options there. If you're going to include wet, then right now, because of the franchises that we have available, I think the youngest franchise is 10 years and some are even older than that. But that would be, that would be there unless you were to renegotiate that particular policy.
I think we have something in our, in our contract that they, they must divert 10% up to 10% if, if a new recycling plan comes along. So, I mean, there's, there's different things going on here, but it's.
The ordinance that you're talking about does include that. Absolutely. If there's an, if there's an investment in the region to do some type of diversion products, then the proposed Health Department regulations, if they were to be approved by this body in the current or some other form, it does dictate either percentages or pounds or tons or whatever, and it talks about that and it's clearly.
And I think it only means, Steve, that if they, if Waste Management can't do it, but they, they can do it.
They'd be more than happy to.
It's a whole different ballgame now, but I mean, it's, it's, this is the.
Paying up money, they'll do it.
They'd be more than happy if you provided them a pricing structure to do it.
Thank you.
We're having a stream. Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more questions on this one?
Okay. Go ahead, Dave. Lastly, I wanted to give you an update on, on what else is happening on the comprehensive plan. And after their, my workshop with you in, I believe it was December, we had on the land use plan in the chapter, Chapter 3. Staff went back and looked at all the comments that we received and redid the land use map. So, I'm currently working with our GT department on finalizing the, a new revised land use map and also adding some of the, adding the, converting the plan development categories onto the map and the TOD categories onto our land use map. I will be having a community workshop on February 4th, presenting this map along with the text and the land use categories. I have drafts written on Chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 and 6. The only chapter remaining that I haven't written anything on yet is Chapter 7, which is concurrency and development. The tentative schedule that I've set up for workshops with city council on the remaining chapters are, would be March of this year, be Chapter 5, a connected city. May of this year would be Chapter 4, livable city. July would be Chapter 7, concurrency and development. And August 10th is what we're projecting to go to Planning Commission for adoption. And then city council would be September of this year. That's our hopeful, optimistic schedule. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody that I have been trying to keep things posted on our website. The documents are on the website and I was going to post this PowerPoint presentation if anybody in the community is interested. You can reach, look for it on our sit, on our website and go under Living and then the Sparks Plan. Thank you.
Thanks Karen. Questions? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Karen, thank you for the presentation and your work on this item. At any point, do we do financial analysis at all?
We can make that part of our analysis when we get, get to a point of where we have a, more of a final document. Right now, we're still in a working document. So, we, if that's the, something that the council would like to look at, we can go through and look at the policies that potentially would have some financial.
And I think that's important that, you know, every policy we have that has potential of costing taxpayers money, whether it's through local government or themselves, through their pocketbook on monthly, monthly expenses, that this has to be noted throughout the plan, that there's a, there's a cost associated with this. Because, you know, what happens most of the time in government, you get these feel-good things coming forward saying, you know, this is feel-good, let's do this. And then, you know, a year later, when it gets into implementation, all of a sudden, there's dollars attached to it. And, you know, we need to know as far as our budget, things that we're making decisions on, if we have dollars attached to those, what it's going to cost us to do that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I don't think we really need any action on this, do we Sean? Just an update. That's it. Thanks. Okay, 6.5, Review and Possible Direction to Staff of a Proposed Term Sheet Outlining a Proposed Interlocal Agreement Between Sparks, Reno and Washoe County for the New Truckee River Flood Management Authority. Mr. Crutts.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini. Members of the council. For the record, Neil Crutts, Community Development Director. Here today to introduce Naomi Doer, Director of the Truckee River Flood Control Project. And she's being supported by Greg Salter, our friendly face to all of us here at Sparks. And she's going to review the, essentially the output of a lot of work that has gone in by staff from the three local governments in conjunction with staff from the flood project to come up with a term sheet, if you will, that will ultimately end up in an interlocal agreement to establish a joint powers authority for the Truckee River Flood Control Project, similar in concept to the creation of TUMWA a number of years ago. You'll, I'm sure that Naomi will cover it, but you'll note that the FPCC has already taken action on the term sheet and, and approved it. It's on your joint meeting agenda for February 1st or next Monday morning. And really, the purpose of Naomi's presentation is today is to kind of give you a preview so that you're, you're up to speed on the, on the terms. And, you know, if there's any discussion you want to have, then you'll be, you'll be better prepared for, for next Monday. With that, I'll turn it over to Naomi.
Thanks Neil. Thank you Neil. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council for having me today. I was here not too long ago at the beginning of this process. And before I got going, I thought I would just formally congratulate Mr. Ron Smith. He was just appointed last week as the Chairman of the Flood Board. And he has been the Vice Chair and I'm looking forward to working with him. It's a big responsibility to, to corral everyone and get them working together as he's had a lot of experience on that board. And I also wanted to thank Councilwoman Ratty last week for subbing in for you, Mr. Mayor. She also did a fine job. As Neil said, what my purpose here today is just to queue you up on what the key provisions are and what you're going to be asked to formally approve next Monday at the joint meeting. There's that. I wanted to inform you of the action that our Flood Board took last week, prepare you for the meeting and then open it to discussion. And any questions you have of me, perhaps I could address those before we get into the larger setting at the joint meeting. As you may recall, about a year ago, there was another joint meeting and it was held February 9th, 2009. And at that meeting, yourselves and all the other Reno and Sparks, Washoe County unanimously voted to move forward with a joint powers authority concept for the flood project. We knew at that time and we discussed at the joint meeting that we would need actually legislative action to allow us to move into a situation where we could charge fees for benefits, access the County Bond Bank and a couple of other, I guess amendments in order to make this actually work. And with that, we did go forward and presented the legislature bill. A number of people from Sparks came down to Carson City and supported us through that process. And so, SB 175 was approved, I believe it was June 1, and the governor signed it in June. Following that, we took a couple month break. That was a pretty arduous process. And come fall, what we did was we set up a staff oversight team and a managers JPA team to vet the concepts, the policies, the provisions and text of an actually, a new cooperative agreement. And I wanted to give a special thanks to this team, which was led by your manager, Sean Carey, who devoted an inordinate amount of time personally himself, as well as Neil Crutts, Joanne Meacham and Doug Thornley from your legal office. And supplementing them as well was Wayne Zidel. And I don't have him listed here, but from time to time, he would participate in the staff oversight group as well. So, we began work in the fall to develop some concurrents, some agreement on the principles, the policies, these key provisions I'm going to go over with you and the actual text of the cooperative agreement. I've just listed the JPA timeframe, but basically from June, when we approved SB 175, to January 8th, when we held our last oversight team meeting, and January 14th, we held our last managers meeting. We then last week presented what I'm about to present to you at our finance subcommittee and our flood project coordinating committee. And now I'm here today, January 25th to 27th, presenting to you today, the county tomorrow and Reno on Wednesday, you know, all of this information so we can get to some, hopefully some closure at the February 1 joint meeting. The idea then is to come back in May, about three or four months later, and hopefully approve the actual text of the joint powers authority. We know it's a lengthy agreement. Most of these agreements are. There's a lot in there. It's a lot to, to really get your mind around. And we wanted to provide time for you to be able to do that. And then hopefully, if all goes well, we would actually establish this new joint powers authority, this new organization in July. So, the key provisions. You were provided in your staff report, the document that, while I called it a term sheet in the memo, we have changed to calling it the key provisions because we feel it's a better description. What it does is it lays out who are the parties to this agreement, what type of organization do we have, how do we move forward in establishing it, what would be the functions and the powers of this new group, how would, how would financing of projects work, what are the rights and obligations of the members, and then what are just some basically general terms that go along with that. So, I thought, I'm only going to take a couple of these because I will tell you that the staff group and the managers group. staff group and the managers' group came to closure in concurrence on virtually everything. I mean, and this is a complicated thing, and it didn't come easy. I mean, we spent months going through the details. But I thought I'd give you the big picture. What's the nature of this organization? Basically, it would be a separate entity. It would be permanent until dissolved. It's a standalone agency. It would not, currently now, we are, we work with Washoe County in the activities that we do. We first of all have to have unanimous voting, and then the item has to be forwarded on to the Board of County Commission. And then they, being a separate entity, actually have the power to take the action. So our Flood Board today really, while they drive the decisions and they make the policies, they really can't take the action to say enter into a contract, or buy a piece of land, or set up certain policy. They have to wait for the Board of County Commission to do that. This would take that, separate that relationship. So we would no longer be a subsidiary of the county. We would draw our powers from the parties, which is you. You, Reno, and Washoe County are lending your governmental powers to this organization. Other examples today in our world that live like this, that are joint powers authorities, are groups like the Truckee Meadows Water Authority, TMAW, or the RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission. Each of these organizations takes their powers from you, sets up a separate entity, has a separate board, and then act independently on their subject matter. RTC for transportation, or TMAW for water issues. We would be the group then that would work on behalf of the whole community on flood issues. And that's big flood issues with a big F, not little flood issues or stormwater management issues, which we have tried to separate and say those issues appropriately belong at the individual local government, Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. The depths and obligations then of this group would be separate from the members. So if we incurred debt in the way we've set this up, now this is not always true, but we tried to draw a line so that if we went to build, say, a flood facility, we got it in over our head, or something happened, the debt wouldn't fall back to the extent that we can control that back to the city of Sparks, or back to the city of Reno. That we thought was very important also. How do we get our funding? Well, the group felt it was important that the members not be assessed for a payment into this group, that we should be, not only standalone, but we should also find our own funding so that we're not a burden on Reno, Sparks, or Washoe County. And then speaking of that, our boundaries for the organization would be the boundaries of Washoe County. So at this point, we would not include Story County, our boundaries wouldn't go into Story County, or into any other county, or any other state. That would be sort of where we work. So then it comes into, well, who's on this board and who are the parties? You may be aware or privy to conversations about the University of Nevada, Reno's role, Story County's role. At the end of the day, our working group and our managers agreed that probably Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County should be the parties going forward. And everything I tell you at this point, I just want to be clear, and I'll probably say this a few times, these again are recommendations to you as elected officials. You may not agree with our thoughts on this, and you may say, no, I think it should be something else. And that is exactly your role. I mean, you are the policymakers, decision makers. We're basically in the background doing a lot of technical work, forwarding our recommendations to you. In this case, we are saying that you and R, while they're a part of the Flood Board today, we're saying that going forward, they would not be. And why is that? Well, in our current cooperative agreement, there is a separate provision that says that you and R is to develop a separate memorandum of understanding with the parties on their issues. And it specifically says in today's world, today's cooperative agreement, that once that separate MOU is done, they would go off the board. So we're anticipating that separate MOU to be done by July 1. And, and they would naturally then move off the board and just become another big player, just like lots of people are affected or participate in this process. There's been a whole other conversation about Story County, and I've discussed this with you before. The question was, because we share boundaries, and because some of the flood project features, but no flood features, but some of the flood project features such as restoration are located in both Washoe County and Story County, should Story County be a participant here? And what we did as staff was, we went to, back to basics, and we said, at the bottom line, this is a flood project, and that's the driving goal of why we're doing this thing. The restoration features do have a role on improving flood management, but they are themselves really mitigation features. There are also things to be built in Story County, such as the Rainbow Bend, what we call walkway. It's basically to protect Rainbow Bend from us. It's not to prevent flooding necessarily in their area today for a certain flood. So at the end of the day, Story County and their residents aren't going to really be made better off when it comes to flooding. They will be protected from us being made better off. And so really, the, one way to think about it is, do they have a stake? What's their skin in the game? Well, really, they're in a defensive posture, really. They have to be protecting themselves from us. It didn't seem like going forward, that's what makes a person a good party, to actively do something, in that they're in a protective role. So our staff recommendation was to not have them as part of the voting membership of the board. Certainly, you might want to consider, and our board might want to consider if this gets set up, to put Story County on an advisory committee. You know, their opinion is very important to us. They've been excellent partners up till now. We have three restoration projects that have been built on Reno, Washoe, I mean Reno, excuse me, Washoe County and Story County line. But again, does it rise to the level of being a voting member as staff? We didn't think so. Number of board members per partner. We have been following what we call senatorial model, which basically has equal representation from Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. Some of these JPAs I mentioned, like RTC and TMAW, do not have equal representation today. They have representation based on, perhaps on how many people live there, or how many people use roads, or how many, you know, rate payers are in the water system, or whatever. But right today, we follow this senatorial model. And the reason why, we believe I've laid out here, is kind of the unique part of the business that we do. I mean, floodwaters do not respect jurisdictions. When it floods, it goes everywhere. It really doesn't matter what we say or where we draw lines. It doesn't stay in one part of the valley or another. We've found that these flood features have to be planned, built, and operated in close coordination. We have found that flood features in one jurisdiction can affect the flood impacts or benefits in another jurisdiction. And I came up with a little catchphrase saying, with respect to the flood project, what happens in one jurisdiction does not stay in that jurisdiction, despite what works for Las Vegas and things staying in Las Vegas. It's not the case here. And then also, this model, the senatorial model, has worked for the last four and a half years. That's the way we've been set up, and we've made tremendous progress. You know, I've come to you making various progress reports from time to time. You know, it's working, we're getting things done. Maybe not as fast as everyone would like, but at least we're, we are on go, and we're moving and we're building. The alternative, which we have been asked to investigate, is perhaps we should be setting up this board a different way, based on some other metric. You could say, well, let's look at the number of structures damaged. You know, forget the number of people, forget the rate payers, what about just the pure number of structures? Or you could say, hey, it's all about the rate payers. You know, we have 12, you have 7, we should have more representation on the board. Or you could say something like, well, it's the amount of funding. And I've heard this one a lot, it's the amount of funding that would be generated by a partner, and they should get more representation. And again, I note that TMAW, RTC, even the Western Regional Water Commission are set up with this sort of unequal representation. Or you could think of, as we did, 10 or 20 different ways, more ways, to figure out who should be on this board or not. At the end of the day, it really comes down to, I thought I'd give you an example. So I took anticipated revenues from a fee and the sales tax. Like, let's look at the money. And let's imagine we have a six or seven member board, it doesn't have to be one or the other. What we found is that it really depends on how we flow the rates. If we just start with one rate, as you have done, and keep it constant, so you've started with a $5.41 for flood fee, and you've kept it constant up till now, not that you always will, we found that if we had a six-member board, that would lay out 2-2-2, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County. If we had a seven-member board, actually, there's a little bit more coming in from Reno, they would get an extra member. So on a seven-member board, they'd have more than everyone else. Or we could start with rates that are low, and stepwise increase them. We found out that resulted in a 2-1-3 board. And if you looked at a seven-member board, it could be 2-1-4, with Washoe County having three or four seats. Or if you started sort of in the middle and ended in the middle, you might again end up with a 2-1-3, but if you had a seven-member board, when you do the rounding, it ends up with 2-2-3. My point in this example is, you could decide what you want the endpoint to be, and you could find numbers in our world to justify that. And what I have recommended to all the parties is that rather than spending a lot of time talking about fees, which don't even exist today, implemented in a certain way, which no decisions have been made how to implement those or to even do them, in other words, in a very speculative approach, you could come up with every theory. And I'm saying, rather than do that, perhaps you can look at what's been working for us. And so our recommendation, regardless of this rate picture, was to go with equal representation for the parties, based on the nature of flooding. And moving on, there's the issue of quorums, and how many need to pass a motion. Today, we have eight voting members. What we need to do to have a quorum, you always have to have one more than 50%, five members constitute a quorum today. In the proposal, if you had a six-member board, you would need four to achieve a quorum. And of course, all four, four would need to vote to pass a motion based on state law. That's how it works. Today, we require 100% consensus for all motions. 100% of the people have to agree. There are many people that like that, they say, my gosh, it's actually worked. You know, it's kind of counterintuitive. In the beginning, you might think this is not going to work. But what's happened is it's worked, and for four and a half years, our board has managed to, at 48 meetings, okay, so about 11 or 12 meetings a year, 15 votes a meeting, they've managed to find a consensus all the time. We still know that not everyone agrees with that concept. You know, it's unusual for America.
We've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Naomi. It's worked for four to five years, but we want to change it now.
Right. Well, I'll tell you why. Well, I've understood from Sparks, from your representatives, that you very like it, and it's working, and it gives a lot of power to an individual, because any one individual can hold up the action. There are still people that feel based on just a basic American process, that simple majority works better. It works here at your council, works at all the other councils and commissions, it's the way things tend to be done. But to address your issue, we thought as staff that a supermajority should be required for some very important decisions. And those very important decisions are things like the Living River Plan, which in my opinion is a key decision. The board has to agree on what that is, or amendments to that. Budgets, the capital improvement plan, the fees, borrowing, and policies and regulations. And what that turns out to be is five of six. It's almost six of six. It's a, it's a, it's a high level to reach. It still allows people to speak to their principles, because what I've found on the board sometimes is, some members have wanted to not vote yes. And you've all seen it. I know your members have seen it. And they would have preferred to vote no in a particular instance, truly. But they felt for the good of the order, for the future, for the flood, implementing the flood project, they should vote yes. So requiring you 100% consensus, basically you get to, some people really support the thing, some people are kind of in the middle of the road, some people are kind of lukewarm to the idea, but for the good of the order, they're going to vote yes. In other words, it doesn't let them either register their individuality, or maybe a position of your body, by the requirement that you vote yes. Most people don't want to stop the thing dead, you know. I'll give you an example, Virginia Street Bridge. We had a member or two that would just as soon have not voted to replace Virginia Street Bridge. It's the oldest bridge in Nevada, and it has a huge historic support, you know, from the Historic Resources Commission. And yet, we felt that we needed to restore, replace Virginia Street Bridge. So that member or two that felt that way didn't really have a big choice. If they voted no, there would be no replacement of Virginia Street Bridge. So if they voted yes, it would sort of not really give them the opportunity to reflect their perspective. And in the end of the day, what we did was we crafted the motion in such a way that we would look at every alternative to replace the Virginia Street Bridge, to basically speak to the needs of that member before we actually replaced the bridge. It would have been simpler for that member to be allowed to vote no, and the rest of the body vote yes, if they so desired. So, you know, this, this was our compromise. Basically, recall that the people in Reno, the council there, felt rather strongly that all votes should be simple majority. I got a sense that this council felt somewhat strongly that the votes should be unanimous. And we got to move forward. We can't be on deadlock on voting, and so we came up with this compromise. So that's...
You know, and I appreciate your explanation on things, but I think in all your explanations you have, I can show you the exact reason why it works.
Okay.
You know, you did persuade the one person to go ahead and move on, whether they had their individuality or whatever. I mean, they didn't have to vote in the first place.
You mean...
They didn't have to show up for the vote if they knew there was going to be a problem with it. So, I mean, that, you know, there's, and what I have a problem with this JPA versus the other JPAs, and the reason why I think the 100% vote is important, is because you're going to be taking tax dollars and the ability to tax our citizens in whatever way you want to. Now, TMAW's different because they bought an operation, and it's their rate users. They're setting fees and things like that. But you're taking existing tax structures from the city of Sparks that we have in place, and then going and moving them over to income for you folks. And then you have the right to go in and manipulate that whatever way you want to. And so you're going to be affecting our citizens, city of Sparks. So I think that, you know, it's important for us to be 100% on board that if you're going to, and I'll take the Virginia Street Bridge, you brought the example on up. You're going to tax the citizens of the city of Sparks to go ahead and replace that bridge. And I want to make sure that our two representatives are fully on board. And if the city council feels very strongly about an issue, and they tell our representatives, and we vote on it, we tell our representatives how we feel, and they go to that meeting and they vote something differently, then they have to deal with the council on that. And, you know, we've been very clear that, you know, this council's direction, you know, we tell our representatives, and yes, they do have the right to go ahead and say what they want to there, but they should take our voices forward to it. So I think there's extremely compelling reasons why, especially for the small child in the situation, if you want to call that. You know, we are the smallest entity on out there, and we have a history of being trampled on in several different areas, that it's important that that stay 100%. If it's worked for four to five years, why change it now? Because I can see by reading this, that you're going to get into humongous arguments about different things, which category they fall into, whether, you know, a rule change is a four out of six, or is it a 75%? You know, and it's, I see where this is going, you know, in the road. My opinion is you should be staying with full six members voting.
And Mr. Mayor, I mean, I don't know if any other council members want to...
No, they can speak up if they want. You know, I was very pessimistic when we started this thing at full, you know, 100% consensus. I never thought anything would get done. You know, I was gladly, I was wrong. I still, I still think there's enough of a parachute here with the, you know, there's always one member can, two members can, from one entity can stop a vote on the Living River Plan, on budgets, on CIP, on fees, on borrowing. So, you know, I'm on the committee, and I don't know if I'll be on there again, but, you know, to me, all the council has to do is give me direction, and my counterpart, where there's two of us, we can, we can stop the major things that cost us money and those kind of things. So it's worked, and it'll probably continue to work, but when we get into the battles of fees and things like that, we need a little more leeway, I think.
Okay. So are you saying that you're comfortable with the proposal?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the proposal.
Comfortable with the proposal? Okay. And I guess, do you mind if I ask any other, I don't know if there's any other feeling? It helps me to sort of prepare for...
Well, you know, when it was, when we had a consensus, that was Sparks's hammer. That's the only thing we had going for us, and it worked pretty well for us. But we got everything passed, and I think that 2-2 and 2 worked for us just fine, I really do. Because on the major issues, we can veto it, or we can, we can vote for it, whatever we...
Well, major issues, that's correct. But how this would work is, let's say you had two representatives from Sparks, we would need at least one of those two to vote for the thing. And if both were against it, well, the thing would die, whether it's amendments to the plan, or the capital improvement plan. Remember, what we tried to key, to highlight here in the 75% is those key money things, like the fees that you're speaking of, the budget, the plan, what we're going to do, we put those to the 75%. And I will say, you know, Mayor Kishel was one, just for example, because he's gone on record with this several times, that wanted all the things to be a 51% vote. And he bent, and you'll see, I think, my next one, oh, no. He bent to agree to this, which is, you know, wasn't exactly his preference, and he actually made the motion. So I felt, what can I say, I felt a little inspired that he was willing... So, I felt, what can I say, I felt a little inspired that he was willing to make some movement towards the Sparks position and basically hand over to you, really, the equal decision-making with everyone on the key important things. But I completely hear you and that's why you have the option to have different perspectives, you know, on a council. All right, I'll just move on. There's only one or two more slides. Regulatory issues, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things on this because people are like, "Well, what do you mean regulatory issues? What does that have to do with this?" Not many people know that when we sign an agreement with the Corps of Engineers, basically to get a billion plus to build our project, we have to sign what's known as a project partnership agreement or a PPA. There, I printed out, went over in detail with our flood board, but I'm just going to give you some highlights. There are a couple of key provisions that, that are kind of, you know, eye-opening and one of those is that not less than once a year, in other words, every year, we have a requirement to inform our stakeholders, our citizenry, about the extent of protection provided by our project. So, every year in some way, we have to announce this project is protecting against a 100-year flood or 75-year flood or 20-year flood. It just depends how well it's working based on how development has occurred. And this is the time where I really have to make this key point. The flood project is being built to protect today's citizens from flooding. The people who live here are ready, the homes, the businesses that are here are ready. That's what the Corps of Engineers cost shares on. They're very clear with us that they don't cost share on some future condition, people who don't live here today, buildings that aren't here today. And so, we could always build something bigger, something different, but what the Corps is going to cost share on with us is protecting today's residents. And so, they've picked a point in time, basically our last model data, which is around 2007, and they said, "Those are the people that lived here and that we're working to protect." So, the future people, future developments, we're obviously, despite the current economy, going to continue to grow, basically have to not impact the flood project. In other words, they have to, when they're planning, when they're building, they have to incorporate the runoff expectations into their modeling and they have to make sure they understand how you're going to impact the project. So, they also have a requirement here that the locals, that's us, must prepare a flood management plan within a year after the signing of the agreement and implement that plan. And the plan is designed to reduce the impacts of future flood events on the project area and we have to address those measures to be undertaken locally to preserve the level of flood protection. So, my staff have coined a term for this. They call it protect the protection. So, we build the flood protection and then we have to make sure going forward that it keeps working as designed. In other words, we don't have to build a 100-year project and then, well, do some development and now it's protecting against a 90-year flood. And the people are upset when the flood comes and they said, "This thing was supposed to protect us, it didn't work." Well, it's only not going to work if we go outside the bounds and start doing all kinds of things that make it not work. And so, we, the flood board, the staff, all of us have to understand that, including you as a council, because what happens is new developments are coming in and they will come in again. They will go to the regional planning commission, excuse me, the planning commission and the planning commission has to make a decision. And somehow, we have to link up what we're doing at the flood project with what's happening at the planning commissions. And so, what we're recommending as some of the key points, and we haven't put a lot of details in the agreement, but we would flesh out the details later, but I just wanted to make sure you understood this. What we're expecting would happen is that both at the regional level and the master plan level, we would establish some standards. And those standards would basically say, "Here's the flood project. You got to make sure at the end of the day, you don't hurt that thing." You know, and the standard would be not so informally crafted, but it might talk about no adverse impact. Then, what would happen is that the flood staff and representatives of your jurisdiction would work together, we have, call this the project management team, to review projects for conformance with the standards using a model that we're now developing and other tools that we will develop. So, that development comes in, we would run their impacts through the model and we would say, "Oh, my goodness, this has gone to reduce the level of protection for the people who live here by, let's say, 2 percent. And in order to mitigate that, here's some things you can do." And we would then send that over to your planning commission and tell them, "Here's what we recommend that you include in your development order." The question is then, does the planning commission do it? You know, there's lots of other considerations. They're not bound by us. They got lots of things to think about. So, they may or may not do that thing. And when they don't do that thing, I should have an opportunity or my successor staff to come and say, "Hey, we signed an agreement and we said we would protect the protection and here's what we believe needs to be done." And what I really see happening is that maybe a planning commission might say, "Well, you said that there needs to be 50 acres of mitigation. We think that's too much. There should only be 20 acres of mitigation." To, you know, that something needs to be done, but not as much as you flood people say. But, you know, we will have studied it quite a bit. It's our area of expertise and maybe the planning commission forwards the development on to you as the council and says, "We recommend 20 acres of mitigation and the flood people said 50." They may or might not tell you depending how your whole process is set up. We want to make sure that I have the opportunity to come visit you, remind you of the agreement we signed to get a billion dollars, remind you of, tell you what process we followed. That doesn't mean we're 100 percent right. There's always room for a different perspective. But what we want to make sure is that, let's say, then this development is so big or there's so much controversy about it that it ends up going to the regional governing board for planning, we need an opportunity to speak up for, for you, for our current residents to make sure that the new people coming in aren't going to harm you. And then, bottom line, if all that, I expect all of that to work 95 percent, 98 percent of the time, but if there comes a day where despite all of this conversation, that other, other issues seem more important, such as jobs, say, you know, it could be, well, we care about the flood, but we care about jobs more. That's not an unusual kind of thought process. Or this is just too expensive for this time. We care about the flood, but we'll deal with it in about 10 years. We'll gather a bunch of money and we'll deal with the problem then. We need to have some kind of remedy to make sure that we've done everything we can to do what we said when we, meaning the flood board, signed this agreement with the Corps. So, that's, you know, I'm sorry I had to take a little bit of time there, but I know the planning process is very important to you, you know, development in Sparks is very important to you and I wanted to explain, we just see ourselves as another seat at the table, you know, like the other people that are giving you their opinions on schools or roads or whatever and sometimes you like those opinions and sometimes you don't like those opinions. We just wanted to make sure you understood. The second thing is that.
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kergan.
I'm sorry, Naomi. I thought you were finished. Go ahead and finish your thought.
Just the second thing there was, in addition to the Corps requirements, there's a one other aspect here, even if that didn't exist, which I think is very compelling. There are statutory provisions that say, if you're going to be a fee-making body, you have to be able to regulate the thing that you're charging the fee for. And it's just, you know, one goes in hand with the other. Greg did all the research, you know, put all this together. So, even if you said again, "It doesn't matter, you know, we said yeah, that, but this is now," at the end of the day, we have to have some role in regulating in order to enact the fee. So, back to you, Mr. Kergan.
Mr. Kergan, thank you, Mayor. This has to do with Chapter 7 and it has to do with insurance and indemnification.
Okay. Sure.
Just a real quick question.
Yep.
The way I read this is as soon as we sign the JPA, then the authority, the flood authority is going to take responsibility if we flood. Is that correct? So, in other words, we're going, if somebody decides to sue the City of Sparks, we just pass them on to you. Is that right? Did I read that right?
Well, for the things, and I may call Greg to help me with this one, but it was.
Well, that's why I was asking because, you know, Greg's in the audience. He needs to come over and say something.
Exactly. Well, why don't you come up, Greg? But the bottom line is that we have to maintain insurance for our facilities. So, there's a number of kind of problems that could happen. Our facilities could break, you know, like even, like the Fernley Canal broke. It's a facility that belongs to us. We have to be responsible for how that facility is built and maintained and make sure that we do all the right things so it doesn't break. But if it did break, that would be an issue we have to deal with. As Greg's explained to me, someone falls off the levee. That's another kind of problem. We have to be responsible for that. You want to take this from here since you're up now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. But here's the question. The reason I've gone into a little detail is if it floods, I mean, you have to understand the difference between localized flooding and flooding that's in the flood project. So, there's lots of localizing flooding and if you get someone that has a problem with flooding, but it's not due to a Truckee River flood, that we're protecting.
No, I'm just talking about the Truckee River.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading this correct.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And that's for everything that the flood project would all.
Right.
We're going to indemnify and hold harmless and put ourselves out in front of all the all the members.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure. And then, Naomi, you were talking about the $1 billion. What horizon is that on?
Good question. Right now, it's on a horizon, if I recall, of around 2013. We had hoped for 2011 to be getting authorization and that was just set back a year. And if it goes in regular order, they told us that it would get authorized in 2012 and then the funding would come in 2013.
Do we have an over and under bet going? Because I'd like to take the over if we do.
Probably unbeknownst to me, if you want to know if my staff are taking that bet. We've been continually surprised to the point that it's no surprise, you know. Here's the bottom line. I thought it was a very insightful comment. At our last meeting, we had a visit by the new second-in-command at the Sacramento District. And after the meeting, so not many people heard this, she, we talked about the process and she said, "You know, Naomi, bottom line, the Office of Management Budget, their goal is to have as few flood projects as possible, right? Because those are expenditures of federal tax dollars." So, they have established a process because at the end of the day, they control the purse strings. They have established this process of benefit-cost analysis and all these requirements. Their goal is not to get as many flood projects funded and as have as many federal expenditures. And she said, "I can't, I can't say it any more straight than that. You are working against people in the federal government who do, you know, have a big interest, the OMB, in reducing federal expenditures all day long. That's what they do." And at the end of the day, our project has to be reviewed by OMB and they have to prove it, say, "We've met all the tests." And that's why there are so many tests, because they do not gladly and willingly give out, you know, a billion plus dollar. It's just the fact of life. And we might talk about, well, the Corps care and their mission's flooding and all this, but at the end of the day, you know, it's that, I guess.
Mr. Smith.
And to help with Mike's question, we're not getting the billion dollars in one year.
No.
If we, whatever we get, it'll be over a 10- or 15-year process.
Correct.
So, you're still talking 20 years from now before we get any flood, the true flood protection at this.
The final piece.
That we need, yeah.
I think what made it for me was the first time that we met with, I think, Mr. Woodley.
Yes.
And his comment was when we tell him, you know, "How long was it going to be?"
Right.
Blah, blah, on and on. His comment was, "Well, let me tell you this. This is not a sprint, it's a marathon." So, if you put it in that perspective, what we're going through is a marathon and it's continuing.
And very common.
Yeah.
To communities across the country who are all opposed against this, so I'll tell you one other thing. At our last flood board meeting, the Corps is currently, has something called the Principles and Guidelines are up for review. What should guide the Corps' dynamic in doing these projects nationally? And one of the things I asked my board for permission to do was to develop a set of proposals and one of those proposals in the, you know, we, in other words, it's been posted in the Federal Register, we get to comment. And I believe one of our comments should be that if you're going to build a flood project to, let's say, a minimum standard, and I'm saying it should be 100-year minimum standard, we should not have to go through this extensive vetting process and analysis and benefit-cost and all of this. It should just be presumed, if we're found cost beneficial, then the federal government should be willing to co-fund with us 100-year protection. Now, something more, even the 117, 250 sub-communities are building 400- and 600-year flood protection projects. Yeah, you want that vetted and you want to make sure that the federal government should be participating in that, but if we've made the basic tests and we have basically an urban community and FEMA's had standards for going on 20 years to do 100-year protection, I am proposing, and I hope the flood board will join me in February, in proposing that we ask the federal government to do away with this very complicated process for very basic flood protection. Now, I had calculated, just, this is completely, not even back in the envelope, this is just a gut feeling, that we're into our 15th year, if you start counting back in 96, before even the 97 flood. I think doing that would have cut eight to 10 years off this process, right there, because we have spent a lot of time talking about what is the federal investment in our project? What's reasonable nationally for people in Maryland and Massachusetts and Maine to contribute to flood protection in Sparks and Reno, Nevada? And if we could have not had that conversation and just said it's reasonable for them to all contribute to 100-year protection, I think we could have put a lot of this time, you know, off the table. Your manager also recommended that we look at making some comments about benefit-cost. We're very worried that they were setting higher and higher standards. You know, now it's $1 spent for $1 saved. There were some proposals about having, having to save $2.50 for every dollar saved and the more these go up, the less we become cost beneficial, right? Because how much do you have to prove? So, and I'm going to be tearing that thing apart, that Principles and Guidelines and seeing what we like and what we don't like and seeing if the flood board will support me and making a whole series of comments back to the federal government on this. It's a big opportunity, you know, to at least make it different for others and it may even come to help us if we go to 2013 or whatever. Lastly, I wanted to make you know that the flood board voted to adopt the key provisions with a governing board of six, with two representatives from each party, with voting that would be 51 percent on most issues, but 75 percent on these very key, german financial issues. And what we wanted today, you've already done it, is to discuss some of these proposals, let me know where you stand. You know, other bodies are listening to what you say so they could sort of queue up for next Monday. It's so, it was important, Mr. Smith, that you let, you know, the world know, your other colleagues, where you stand, how you feel. I think that was important.
It's just not my colleagues, it's citizens I represent in this community.
Right.
They're the ones that need to know that they're giving away their rights.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. We don't need to take action on this either, do we, Sean?
It is styled where you could give direction. However, I think you can do that next week as part of the joint body.
Okay. Any other direction given? Okay.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your time today.
Thanks, kids. Appreciate it. Okay, public hearings. 741, possible reconsideration of an action on January 11, 2010 City Council Agenda Item entitled, Public Hearing Consideration and Possible City Council Approval for the Redevelopment Agency to Enter Into the Victorian Square Purchase and Sale Agreement for Public Rightway for $241,559.81 plus closing costs. Mr. Arnellis. Whoops. Mr. Solano.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, I've been advised by legal counsel that I need to abstain and not participate, Mrs. Jim Biden, along with the companion item on the redevelopment agency, a general duty of the fact that the Sparks Nugget is a client of mine.
Okay, Mr. Arnellis.
Mayor Martini, Members of the Council, Armando Arnellis, City Planner. Very briefly, this agenda item provides to the City Council to reconsider actions it took on January 11 regarding Victorian Square Purchase and Sale Agreement for Public Rightway. The agreement provides for, first, completing the purchase for the price of $131,559.81 of the Phase One Rightway for Victorian Square Public Improvements. And then, secondly, acquiring an additional 5,383 square feet of rightway needed for the proposed Phase Two A Victorian Square Public Improvements for the price of $110,000. The property owners would also retain two newly created parcels referred to as Parcels F and G, each of which is 9,000 square feet in size. And per the agreement, the agency would assign its rights for the right-of-way lying to the city by recreation of a merger and re-subdivision map. On January 11, the City Council approved two different motions. They are on page five of the staff report. The first motion basically provided for the approval of the $131,559.81 for the Phase Right, Phase 1 right-of-way. The second motion was the motion that was in the, in the staff report and it provided for approval and consent for the agency to enter into Victorian Square purchase and sale agreement for public right-of-way. The staff recommendation would be that the City Council again approve and provide consent for the agency to enter into the Victorian Square purchase and sale agreement for public right-of-way. I would refer to City Attorney Adams on this point, but there was a public hearing conducted last time. This is an agenda, this is a public hearing, so I don't know if you want to open up your phone to me again today, but-
Yeah, we will.
Questions? Okay. Questions for Mr. Arnellis. Mr. Carrigan.
I think the council had extensive discussions regarding the, the two motions. And I understand that the motion one is to proceed with the right-of-way that was being used by the city under our 2006 DDA. In regards specifically to the second motion, I would appreciate the council maintaining direction, whatever your outcome is on that item, that we continue to work towards the acquisition of the right-of-way necessary for the street. If this deal is not acceptable to you, just that I would like to continue efforts by the city to move towards the street construction.
Okay, questions? Mr. Smith.
So, we're going to break this up like we did last time.
That's at your place, sir.
That's your, that's- Well, I think Mr. Carrigan made the motion last time, so, okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public would like to speak to this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Anything else, Armando?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for staff? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Okay, I'm looking for the motions on here. Make a motion to approve the $131,559.81 payment for the 3,658 square feet of right-of-way used for Victorian Square Phase 1 public improvements to comply with the surviving terms of a 2006 DDA.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the first portion of this particular item, 131,559.81. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Go ahead, Julia.
I just wanted to double check, same thing as we, when we did this last time. Do we need to amend the motion to include findings A and B so that we stay within the package?
I'll include that. To include the motion was amended to include findings A and B by Councilman Carrigan and the amendment was seconded by Councilman Smith. Same thing.
Okay. Mr. Carrigan.
And just- Sorry about that. Just for the record, I would also ask that the amount of 131,359.81 include any closing costs that may be proper to adjoin that portion of payment.
I don't see in the first motion, but we can, we can put that in there.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Ratty?
Yes. I just barely hear you guys now because the mic is a little bit hard.
Was to include closing costs.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
No plus. As plus. Less closing costs.
As necessary.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? Any questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, please vote.
I think I missed it the first time. Can you answer this question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's three zip with one abstention.
It's four. Four.
We're missing a-
Oh, no, Ratty's there.
Oh, Ratty's there. Okay, I'm sorry, Julia. So, it's four to nothing with one abstention. I'm sorry, I apologize. Can't read. Okay, second portion of this particular agenda item. Do, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
I don't see the amount in here. I don't see the, the amount, but it's, um-
What's the amount, Armando?
$110,000.
$110,000.
Same motion, right? Okay. Move to approve $110,000. Is it even?
Yes.
Payment for the 3,658 square foot of right-of-way. Is the same, is that the, different, wrong?
No, the, the Phase 2 right-of-way is 5,000, pardon me, 5,383 square feet.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the $110,000 payment for the 5,383 square feet of right-of-way used for Victorian Square Phase 1 public improvements. No. Yes.
Phase 2.
Phase 2. Public improvements to comply with the surviving terms of the 2006 DDA.
Mr. Smith, I would suggest that-
How come I don't have a motion written down here that I can just read it?
It's left over here.
No, that's, that's not it. Is it? Okay, I got it. Okay. All right, we'll start all over again.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion to approve and provide, provide consent for the redevelopment agency to enter into the Victorian Square purchase and sale agreement for public right-of-way. And based upon information in the staff report and discussed at the meeting with findings A and B, including authorization for the mayor to sign the merger and subdivision map to be finalized and recorded as per Article 6 of the agreement, and acceptance by the city of Sparks of the right-of-way that will be purchased by the agency and assigned to the city of Sparks, $110,000.
That's correct.
Do we have a second? Is that a second? Yes, Ms. Ratty?
Right.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve the second portion of this as, as stated by Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay, it passes 4-0 with one abstention. Okay. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean, if we, if we move to go to closed door, we're not coming back here, are we?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So, we can do the rest of the agenda and then do that?
Do the rest of the agenda plus the redevelopment agency. It'll probably be 15, 20 minutes in a closed session, but no action will be, require you to return tonight. So, you can adjourn this meeting.
So, we can adjourn this meeting without?
Call for the closed-door meeting and then-
And adjourn.
And adjourn. Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to 6.6 then. Well, let's do 9.1. Any comments from the council or city manager? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion on 6.6 to move to conduct a closed-door session after redevelopment.
I move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Solano, seconded by Councilman Smith to go to a closed-door session after redevelopment agency. Any further discussion? Whoops, wait a minute here, kids. Let me clear, clear the score here. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Aye.
Well, we'll see you there then, Julia.
Thank you, Mr. Carrigan.
Okay, it passes unanimously. Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Call the order, the redevelopment agency meeting of Monday, January 25th with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith.
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson, agency members, Ratty.
Here.
Solano.
Here.
Martini.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer, Kerry.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Would anybody here like to speak on any issues? Don't see any cards. Okay. Bring back to the agency. Mr. Solano.
Once again, Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from this agenda item as I did in the previous one.
Okay. I'll read the statement. Request from the agency members, Julia Ratty and Phil Solano, to reconsider an action taken at the Sparks redevelopment agency meeting of January 11, 2010, regarding a public hearing consideration of and possible City Council consent for the redevelopment agency to enter into the Victorian Square purchase and sale agreement for the public right-of-way for $241,559.81 plus closing costs. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda, consideration of taking items out of sequence.
So, we have to vote on the reconsideration, first.
Do I have to do that first?
Yes, please.
I make a motion to call for the reconsideration.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any discussion first? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as listed? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Number three, recommendation to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of December the 14th, 2009. Looking for a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the regular, the minutes of the regular meeting of December 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1578.02]